I'll go ahead and get this meeting started of the Galveston Municipal Regional Planning Commission for Monday, February 22nd, 2021. Let me read a short message pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, number 16, number 34, number 51, number 60, number 65, and number 71, and the need to limit the community's spread of COVID-19. Members of the Planning Commission will participate by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Galveston. So we will start by conducting a roll call, but also a vote to hold the meeting by electronic means. So when your name is called, please respond with present and approve, if you approve of holding the meeting by electronic means. Mary Ann, will you take the roll call?
Yes. Chair Perrier.
Present and approve.
Vice Chair Harris.
Present and approve.
Mr. Wilson.
Present and approve.
Councilwoman Love. Councilwoman Love.
Sorry, I was muted. Here, here and approve.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler.
Present and approve.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I'll leave this in a short invocation. Dear, if you'll bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here this evening. Please watch over these proceedings and help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of the community and decisions that that serve you in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Mr. Wilson, will you do the honor of leading us in the pledge?
Yes, I do have a little flag back here now.
Perfect.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisually, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Does the Secretary have prior minutes to submit for approval?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got minutes dated January 11th, January 25th, a move we approve.
All right, do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll, I'll make a second to the motion, and I have a clarification for the January 25th minutes.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, that's fine. On the, on the January 25th minutes, on the Bowles Farm project, it actually, it's actually my own disclosure that, that minutes read that Vice Chair Harris disclosed he is in the process of acquiring a business in the area, and just declare it's not a business, it's, it's residential property in the area that one of my businesses is purchasing. So we're not, we're not actually buying a business in the area.
We'll fix it in the minutes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mary Ann, I will also, or board, I will also make a minor correction to the minutes from January 25th on page 14 of those minutes, January 25th. This is minor, but just for clarification, said, stated Chair Perrier said that all, this is in regards to the goat farm. Chair Perrier says that although Planning Commission is only addressing the Galveston portion of the development, residents are concerned that the entire property should be addressed. He said the northern property, the northern portion of the property will be development, and the proposed apartments are next to existing apartments. I'd just like to clarify that what I certainly hope I said was that it is certain that the northern proper, portion of the property will eventually be developed.
I'll make that change, thank you.
Thank you. With, are there any further changes, Councilwoman Love?
I have one small thing on the same page, January 25th, page 14. It says, and I don't, I didn't write down what paragraph, but it says Mrs. Love said the only negative comments, I believe I said most negative comments instead of making it sound like the only.
Very good. Mary Ann, that would be on page 14, paragraph three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other changes? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve both sets of minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion on the floor by the Secretary and second by Matt. So with those, the motion on, I will make a motion that we approve with the three changes noted by Matt Harris, Councilwoman Love, and myself.
Second.
Yeah, maybe out of order, we have two motions on the floor, but I think everybody gets the understanding. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call to approve the minute?
Yes. Chair Perrier.
Approve, aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Uh.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Six zero.
Thank you. With that, let me just briefly run through the agenda and explain to those that are listening that might not have a printed copy tonight. We have 10 items on the agenda, but five of those items are consent agenda, which are non-controversial. We will, unless somebody pulls one of those from the consent agenda, we'll vote on those and approve them as one item. And then we have five items on the regular agenda. Let me read through the items very briefly, so everyone knows where these fall on the, on the order of things. On item number one, one through five are consent agenda items. Item number one is just surety renewals and extensions for the city of Galveston. Item number two are the reverie apartments accepting public improvements. Item number three is Toyota of Galveston expansion. It's an amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan. Item number four is Meadow Glen at Fairway Farms, a final plat. And item number five are Shox at Payne, revised final master development plan. I'll repeat, those one through five items are on the consent agenda. And then our regular agenda items tonight, which by the way, will all come with public comment, are item number six, Bloodso Springs Annexation and Plan of Service. Item number seven, which is Bloodso Springs rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Item number eight is the Harsh property rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Item number nine is Winston Place amended preliminary master development plan. And item number 10 is an action to dissolve the Regional Planning Commission, City of Galveston Planning Department, and replace it with a municipal, original, municipal planning commission. So with that, I will ask is, we'll open a public comment. If anyone has a public comment related to items one through five or on any other topic, not, not the consent, not the regular agenda items, but on any other topic. And if you also, at that time, when you have the public comment, you can ask to have any of the items on the consent agenda removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. With that, I'll open the public comment.
Members of the public, if you would like to speak on any of the consent agenda items, that's items one through five on the agenda, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, or hit star nine on your telephone if you are a call-in, call-in listener. Again, star nine to raise your hand, or use the raise your hand function at the bottom Mr. Chairman, we have Kyle Ring. Kyle, your line has been unmuted.
Thank you. Um, just, I wanted a question about the Bowles Farm, since it's item one.
From a point of order, would you mind stating your, your address as well?
153 Summerland Drive.
Thank you, go ahead.
Um, so the Bowles Farm, we've attended a couple of these meetings, as well as the in-person. My wife and I at the Fairfield Inn a couple of weeks ago, the plan looked good, and it compensated for our main concerns, which were flooding, because the creek comes right behind our house, through their, I think, five or three to five holding ponds, if I remember correctly, in the plan. However, on all the plans and everything we talked about, they never mentioned rental apartments, and my wife pointed that out to me last night in a Facebook post. So is that a change to the plan? And what does that look like in terms of the property? We were kind of under the impression it was just going to be that retirement, 55 and older, active lifestyle community, not a, not a rental apartment style, anything.
The Bowles Farm is not on the agenda tonight. That's an item that Planning Commission discussed and made a recommendation to the city council at the last meeting. I'd be glad to answer the question if, if the chairman wants me to proceed.
Absolutely, I was just going to mention the same thing, that it's not, it'll lose connection.
Your video's gone out, but we can still hear you, John.
Yeah, I was afraid of that. All right.
Can we move into business?
Bill, if you, if you're, if you can answer the question now, or if you prefer to get Mr. Ring contact information and reach out to him with answers to those questions?
Yes, Mr. Ring, if you wouldn't mind contacting our office during regular business hours at 615-451-5796, we'll be glad to provide you some details about your concerns.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is my video back?
Yes, John.
I'm sorry. All right. Um, are there any other, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak or to pull an item from the consent agenda?
So if you are on your phone and joining our meeting, star nine will raise your hand. If you are joining the meeting via computer, please use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen, and that will let me know that you wish to speak on any of the consent agenda items. That's items one through five of the Planning Commission agenda. Mr. Chairman, no one else has raised their hand indicating they'd like to speak on this item.
Very well. With that, I will close the public comment, and I will ask members of the commission, if there anyone on the commission who would like to remove any of the items 1, 3, 5 from the consent agenda and place them on the regular agenda. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as one item.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as one item.
We have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, I believe. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items 1 through 5, indicated by saying aye?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Stroudler. Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to the regular agenda items, starting with item six. Item six and seven will be presented together, but they will be held at separate votes. So who is presenting item six?
Julian Ogden, staff planner.
Thank you, go ahead, Julian.
Next slide, please. The owner and applicant and the city of Galveston request the Planning Commission to recommend to the Galveston City Council a resolution for annexation and a resolution to adopt a plan of service for 44.79 acres and an adjacent 3.1 acre segment of abandoned CSX railroad right-of-way. Next slide, please. This includes 44.79 acres of property owned by the developer, 2.04 acres of abandoned railroad right-of-way now owned by the developer, and 1.06 acres of railroad right-of-way owned by the city. The proposed development is contiguous to city limits and will not require an interlocal agreement. You'll see on your screen, I tried to give an accurate representation now that we are farther along with that railroad right-of-way, where there are two portions where it will intersect with the existing city limits line, because those areas adjacent are city-owned. Half of that railroad right-of-way will go to this developer and be most likely used as, as an extension of the city greenway. And because Hartsfield Pike was actually annexed into the city in October, the property is also contiguous down there on the south part of the property. So just keep that in mind. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The owner and applicant also request to rezone 44.79 acres and an adjacent 2.04 acre segment of railroad right-of-way from RR Rural Residential, which is county zoning, to R8 PRD, Medium Density Planned Residential Development District, with a preliminary master development plan for Bloodso Springs, containing 135 single-family detached residential lots. The city also requests the rezoning of 1.06 acre portion of the abandoned railroad right-of-way from Rural Residential, which is county zoning, to IR Industrial Restrictive, which is just the adjacent zoning on the other side of that abandoned railroad right-of-way. The proposed master plan shows 135 single-family homes on 6,000 square foot lots, which is a density of 2.88 units per acre. This is substantially less than what was proposed with previous versions of this plan. This plan was previously, it previously included townhomes and was almost four units per acre. Next slide, please. The circulation and buffer yards are similar to previous versions of this master plan. Bloodso Springs will include two entrances onto Hartsfield Pike with turn lane improvements, and will connect into the Sunny Mead subdivision. Next slide, please. Buffer yards and open space are provided throughout this development. They do exceed their open space requirements. The abandoned railroad right-of-way will be preserved for an extension of the city greenway system. Next slide, please. The architecture is similar to the previous version of this master plan. The facades will be made up of 70% brickstone or cementous materials such as hardy board. Although the exhibit show side garages, the garages will be on the front for most of the homes. Next slide, please. Both the annexation and rezoning will require public comments and votes by Planning Commission. These items will go on to city council with the Planning Commission's recommendation for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Do we have a representative for the applicant on the lawn?
Mr. Chairman, we also have James Fenton with the EDA, who wishes to discuss this item as a staff member of the city.
Okay, go ahead, James.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that the abandoned railroad that's being set aside for greenway also includes an easement for utilities for the city. Can planning make a comment on that? We, we may be needing to bring fiber through that area for various developments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fenton. Can a staff member comment on that?
Chairman Perrier, I'll jump in, this is Andy with Greenlid representing the project. This was brought up previously, and the owner is agreeable to setting aside that as a utility easement as well. So we're, we're in agreement, we're doing, I don't think it's a comment, if you want to make it an additional condition of approval, then we're agreeable to that.
Okay. As far as representing the applicant, do you, do you have any further comments regarding the staff presentation?
Um, sure, I'll, I'll do now or after the public hearing, whichever you prefer. We also have another.
I promise I'll give you another chance to speak after the post-hearing.
Sure. So I want to add a whole lot to what was presented, and Mr. Julian did a great job. I would just like to point out that the previous zoning on this property, when it was, before the county took over the zoning for this particular section, was R15. And currently, right now, we are proposing, as Julian commented, 2.88 units per acre, which that's a little bit better than what an R15 PRD would allow for. We are also proposing almost 33% open space, which is consistent with what an R6 PRD would require. This is now a contiguous rezone and annexation project, as this portion of the county actually now exists as an island, completely surrounded by the city limits of Galveston on all sides. Not touching, but Galveston encompasses this particular property as well as a few others now. So we try to, the reason we're asking for the R8 is the lot size, but it's because we are setting aside so much in open space. So in a sense, we have the density of an R15 development and the open space of an R6 But I'll answer any other questions that might pop up from the public hearing or that you guys might have going forward.
Okay, thank you, Andy. At this time, we will open a public comment on item number six, which is the, bear with me, hang on, which is the, specifically the annexation and plan of service. I'm not going to confuse things like we attempted to last time. We will have a public comment in just a moment on item seven, which is the, the actual preliminary master development plan. Please limit your comments in this public comment to the issue of annexation and plan of service. Josh, do we have anybody who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have two, two attendees that are lined up, but for anyone else that would like to speak on the annexation only, and that would be item number six of the Bloodso Springs Annexation Plan of Service, please indicate so by raising your hand, or if you are a call-in listener, if you are joining us via your phone, hit star nine, and you will raise your hand. So first, we have Michelle. Michelle, your line's been unmuted.
Thank you. Josh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much. This is Michelle Juvants, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I need to talk to you about Bloodso Springs because it is an annexation. Annexations are a serious matter of great consequence, especially right now with how fast our city is growing. This is the fourth annexation currently up for approval. Right now, there are three in front of city council that you recently saw, Woods Crossing, Twin Eagles, Phase 15, and the Bowles Farm. Something interesting was said at the last city council meeting during the Bowles Farm, and it made me wonder if you, the Planning Commission, is taking the plan of service into consideration when you make recommendations to city council for annexations. Councilman Fan said he would like to see numbers and see figures before making a decision on the Bowles Farm, because it's a massive development, which includes an annexation. So that made me wonder if you all had seen the plan of service, because Mr. McCord answered him that that plan of service would be ready before the second reading. So I was wondering if you all had seen the plan of service for the Bowles Farm, and if not, how you could make a decision about something without considering the plan of service. This is really important. This affects all of us citizens on a significant level. The services the city is required to provide upon annexation should be one of the main points of discussion when you look at these annexation requests. When this, I don't know if you realize, I'm sure you probably do, that state law actually requires that before a plan of service can be adopted, the city needs to submit the plan of service to you, the Planning Commission, for study and a written report. So the Planning Commission's supposed to be doing this feasibility study. So this is, this is a serious matter of great consequence. Anytime that there's an annexation, the Planning Commission's supposed to be studying the details of the plan and providing, providing the services to any land that we're, we're going to be taking into the city, taking, taking on and providing all these services for, regarding Bloodso Springs, this plan of service was voted down by city council in September. At the time, the mayor made the tie-breaking vote on this, and at the time, she said that we're struggling to absorb so much of what's already in our community, because we've let so many annexations happen. She voted no, because it would be land that Galveston would not have to accommodate at this time. So this is something I want you all to consider with all annexations, this one included. We need to be more careful at looking at the plans of services. This particular plan of service states that a fire station and staffing that fire station is going to be needed out at the east end of town. And again, Mayor Brown recently said that staffing another fire station at this time is a lot for our city, after only three years since the last fire station was built and staffed. And she said that it is setting us up for you-know-what. And yes, we do know what she meant by that when she said that, she meant a tax increase. And I don't want a tax increase. I don't imagine any of you enjoy having your taxes go up any more than I do. I wanted to make you aware of that, of what was said about this at city council, if you hadn't already been aware of it. And to say that as a citizen, I am against annexing more property into Galveston at this time, not only Bloodso Springs, but any property. I think that we need to, we need to kind of let things settle in and take care of what we already have in the city, take care of all of the roads and police and fire that we already have before we try to start accommodating more. Thank you very much for listening to me. That was all that I had for this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Allen. Rachel, your line has been unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Hi, and this is actually Kristy Allen. It seems like every time I attend one of these meetings, one of my family members' names pops up, and a different family member, I'm not sure how that happens, but anyway, this is Kristy Allen. I live at 104 Viers Court, and I have a lot of comments that I may need to just save for item number seven, but I too just want to ask, I've got many of the same comments that the previous caller had. I too was on the phone call with the city council back in September where they voted this project down, and again, you know, Mayor Brown was the tie-breaking vote there, and you know, she did say that at this time, you know, another annexation to the city was not a good idea, because, and she used the word struggling with what, you know, was already in the pipeline, and you know, that it would not be a smart thing to do at this time, and that's just been, you know, a few months ago. And I don't know if this would be part of, you know, item number seven, but the question of a, a traffic study, I don't know if that's part of the, the plan of service, if that goes into, you know, if it factors into that, but you know, I'm just curious if there's been a traffic study done for this area in the last year, and if it has, with, with schools being, you know, virtual part of the year and out, you know, for many months, any traffic study that's been done prior to, to now, you know, now that we're back in school full-time, I would think that would need to be redone to accurately reflect the traffic coming through at, at peak times. I'll save my other comments for item number seven, though I'll, I'll stop there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Josh, do we have anyone else?
So this is the last call for item number six, a public hearing on Bloodso Springs Annexation and Plan of Service. If you would like to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, or hit star nine on your telephone, and it will let us, it will let me know that you'd like to speak on this item, which is the annexation for Bloodso Springs. Item number six. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one else has indicated they'd like to speak on this item.
All right. Thanks, Josh. The representative for the applicant, Andy, I promised you that you would have an opportunity to speak. The representative for the applicant, Andy, I promised you that you would have an opportunity to speak again after public comment. Are there any, would you like to address any of the concerns raised during the public comment?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. Two items, and then I'll save any of the other comments for the next agenda item. The plan of service, this was looked at, we talked about this the last meeting, or not the last meeting, but the last time, this was before you all, the city and, and Bill and Jillian can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but they did look at the plan of services. And as I understand it, there's already a need for a fire station on this set of town. And the city's currently working toward, toward that. And that this project alone is not warranting a new fire station. Feel free to correct me, but that's what I heard at these meetings that we had about this project. The utilities, there's plenty of utilities. And yes, we, we have done a traffic study. That traffic study did take into account the COVID pandemic and the lack of travel. It did so by looking at historic traffic volumes and then increasing them by a factor of almost one and a half, one point four. So it did look at historical data, it looked at current data, and it adjusted for the lack of travel during the pandemic. So that was considered within the original study. I could talk more about the traffic study in the next agenda item, but as far as the fire stations warranted, the, the sorry, one warranted and this development's not causing that to be warranted. Josh, we've also got, as part of the team here, Marty, Mr. Marty Cook is representing the owner as well, and he's on this meeting. So Marty, I guess if you want to speak to this as a representative, just let Josh know by raising your hand and he can unmute you as well. Any other questions you might have?
Thank, thank you, Andy. This, again, this is Marty Cook, a representative applicant along with Andy. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission. On the annexation, just a couple of things to point out. And you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe since September, there has been some changes in the annexation, annexation in this area where city property has been extended further past this development. And as Andy said initially, and I believe as Jillian mentioned in, in her presentation, this property is now contiguous to city property, and some of that has only happened since October. So we, we do have a changing area of, of annexation in, in, in the location of this property, which causes it now to be kind of an island of county property within the city property. And I may have some other comments when we get to number seven, but just wanted to mention that on annexation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I'll just want to assure, just one response to Ms. Jevance's questions in the public comment. Yes, there absolutely is a plan of service in the, in the report that we've reviewed. And that's what we'll talk about tonight. So with that, I do want to table item number six so that we can move to item number seven and have a public comment on that. And let me just explain for a moment to those listening why it sounds so meticulous trying to table an item and moving forward. But for the record, we want your comments associated with an item attached to that item in the minute. If you speak in one public comment, if we just lumped it into one comment, that might not go into the official minutes for the comment, public comment addressing the site plan, for example, of the annexation. So following points of order here, we are tabling item number six. We will vote on it in, on a moment. That's a separate vote after we address item number seven. We've already had a staff report on item number seven. So at this time, I'd like to open a public comment regarding the preliminary master development plan for item number seven, Bledsoe Springs. Josh?
This is the public hearing for the development plan and rezoning for Bledsoe Springs, item number seven on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and I can unmute you using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or hitting star nine if you're, if you are joining us via the telephone. So again, raise your hand at the bottom of the screen or hit star nine to speak on agenda item number seven.
And I will just point out that you're welcome to speak again on this public comment, item number seven, even if you already spoke on item number six. I do ask all people speaking that please try to limit your comments to about three minutes so that we can get a chance for everyone to be heard. Josh, do we have anyone who has raised their hand?
No one has raised their hand. Michelle or, oh, here we go. We have Christie Allen has raised her hand. Christie, your line's been unmuted.
Go ahead, Ms. Allen. If you would, please state your name and also your address for the record.
Okay, thank you. This is Christie Allen. I'm at one oh four Vineyards Court. And I have called a couple of times during city council meetings regarding this development. So some of this information, you know, may have, may be repeating, you know, for, for those who've attended that call. But I have concerns, as do many of my neighbors regarding traffic in this area, and specifically with this development being right at the intersection of Airport Road and Highway twenty five and where the entrances would be coming onto Highway twenty five, you know, right across from, you know, other developments on the other side of the highway. And I had contacted Gallatin Police Department. I just wanted to get some information about accidents at that intersection. And Gallatin Police Department, this was back from September last year, and in the, in the previous twelve months, Gallatin Police Department had worked twelve accidents just at that intersection, and that's just Gallatin Police Department. I contacted the Sumter County Sheriff's Department and really wanted to get just accident information from the intersection down to, say, Berry Lane, you know, just that very busy stretch. And they weren't able to separate just that section, so they had to give me the number of accidents from that intersection out to the county line, which is Highway two thirty one. And the sheriff's department at that point had worked seventy eight accidents in that stretch of highway the previous twelve months. And then the Tennessee Highway Patrol in that same stretch of highway had worked six accidents. So it's obviously a very busy, busy roadway, and that intersection currently has emergency traffic as the, you know, EMA headquarters is right there in Airport Road. And there's high construction traffic, you know, especially with Facebook and, you know, everything that's being built in the industrial park. And so we have all of that traffic coming and going right there at that intersection precisely where this development is being proposed. And so we have serious concerns about what that's going to do to existing traffic. I live in the Cairo Road area. And several of my neighbors, there's been a petition go around with more than five hundred signatures. We, we presented that to the city, trying to get some sort of help at the intersection of Cairo Road and Airport Road. I'm not sure if that's going to be a, a traffic light or exactly what, what's going to happen there. But we, we have major struggles right there and just, just down from this intersection that we're, we're working with the city now to try to get some help. So, you know, whatever happens with this, this development, and, you know, we certainly appreciate the reduction of the number of units there and the removal of, of the townhomes. But still, it just feels like that is a, a, a large amount of traffic to add to an already very busy intersection. So we just, we have those concerns. And then also with, with, like I said before, the entrances onto Highway twenty five, I'm assuming none of, none of the traffic from this development will have access to Airport Road. And if that's, if that's not correct, you know, please correct me there. So I'm assuming all of it is going to have to come in and out on Highway twenty five. And then I, tonight heard that it's going to be connected to the Sunny Mead development. And, and honestly, that's, that's a horrible place to try to get onto Highway twenty five in the mornings and the afternoons as well. Carolyn Lane is directly right across the highway from the, one of the entrances there to Sunny Mead, and it's, it's, it's extremely dangerous. I'm probably running out of time. I've got, you know, several other things I'd like to add, but I'll, I'll stop with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Josh, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak?
Michelle and/or anyone else that's in the audience, if you can use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, it will let me know to unmute you so that you can speak during the public comment on item number seven, Preliminary Master Development Plan and Res zoning for Bledsoe Springs. Last call for public comment, item number seven, Bledsoe Springs rezoning with preliminary master development plan.
With that, I will close the public comment on item number seven, and we will return to the item number six, which we tabled earlier. And open this, well, we'll open discussion or I'll entertain a motion on the floor. I would like to hear from Councilwoman Love. This item was previously approved and sent to council, but council had some considered concerns and, and rejected the plan of service and annexation. Councilwoman Love, was it the plan of service and annexation or was it the site plan that people had concerns with?
It was the, the problem with accidents along that high, that road. It was the density. It was the townhouses. And I, I'll go ahead and make my comments now. Andy, I really appreciate you taking out those townhouses and lowering the density. That was a big improvement. And I understand the owner is wanting to sell this and get a good price. But I don't believe that we need to be annexing anymore in that direction in particular. One thing is the track that I know there's been a traffic study, but just listening to that number of accidents just confirms what I have already been told over and over, which is that cars, especially in the morning, coming into Gallatin, come over the hill, back behind that way. They don't realize that cars are stopped along there and just crash right into those. And then I've also heard from a lot of people that live along Hollerman Lane. I can't remember the name of the other street that is in that, going to that neighborhood exactly, but several in Carolyn Lane. They have a terrible time trying to turn and get, go towards Gallatin in the mornings. I had hoped that maybe this development would be able to have an entrance and exit onto Airport Road, but I don't see that that's possible. I, also, I had, in looking at this older information about the lot data, it had said that the side yards would be ten feet minimum. Well, I called planning today to ask a question about that because it says they're only five feet, and they told me that that was an error in the original information. I, I appreciate that there are fewer homes, but five feet in between those just, well, it just doesn't seem to fit that area at all with those nice yards and bigger lots in between there. But I also was reading that, as caller said, Gallatin Fire Department says that this is going to place a strain on their department's response time and recommends another station be built and additional firefighters. There were plans. At, at some point, there will probably need to be more built out that way. But I don't think that we need to annex more in there and push that timeframe up to have that, that needed. Gallatin Police Department also has said that additional officers and vehicles will be needed if this is built. So with the traffic and with all these concerns, I just don't believe annexing this is something that I'm in favor of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Love. By the way, I need to note for the record that Matt Harris had to leave the meeting at, well, I don't have time, six, five minutes ago. He's, but we still have a forum so we can continue. He had to attend a meeting for the airport authority.
This is Rick. I've been on for, I don't know, thirty minutes.
Thank you. Dr. Organe, do you have comments?
No.
All right, let, let the record show that Dr. Organe has been with us since the consent agenda items.
Five twenty one is when I noted his camera come on.
Well, I'll open for some discussion here. I, I know that we, as the commission, voted to approve this annexation earlier. And I've had real second thoughts. It's actually not the annexation that I have concerns about because it's been completely enveloped, completely surrounded by the city, so it's an island remaining within the city's footprint. And that's very confusing for the, the police and fire department when they have an emergency call, whether they're supposed to respond or if the county sheriff's department is supposed to respond. But I, I share all of Councilwoman Love's concerns about the traffic and that intersection and whether we can take this on right now. So my, my chief concerns is with the density of the development. I feel like we should annex it, but I also think we need to slow down some as well. I'm a little undecided on item six, but I'm not in favor of item number seven. That's the best way I can put it. Anyone else have comments and discussions?
Mr. Chairman, I concur with you and Councilman Love in regards to the traffic flows. Thanks for this, thank you. I think that density is an issue, and then with the amount of traffic in those areas, it creates somewhat of a problem until it can be developed more with a fire station or some other emergency response in that area. Industrial will be wise, this building up. So I think we'd have to address some other issues before you look at developing a, a, a area of this magnitude at this time.
Albert, if you remind me, your background and experience is with the highway patrol, isn't it?
Yes, sir. So I'm quite concerned about the traffic issues and things of this nature.
We actually don't have a motion on the floor at this time. We're just having comments, conversation. Anyone else have comments or are willing to make a motion? I tell you what, to do this properly, I will put a motion on the floor to vote in favor of approving item number six, which is the annexation and plan of service. And I'll just remind everyone that we've been enlightened on the rules that if you make a motion on the floor, it doesn't necessarily mean you're in favor of it, but you can't speak against the item. So I feel strongly enough about that item number six that I can put a motion on the floor just so that we have official discussion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Yeah, we have a second. My Mr. Wilson. And we continue the discussion. This is in regards to the annexation part and plan of service. Dr. Organe, did you want to comment or?
No, I didn't have any comments.
Sorry, I had to try to unmute. No, I agree with both, both about the safety and the location at this time. So I'm on the same page.
I believe I've called on everyone. Uh, Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry.
No other comment.
By the way, have they given us any in-depth traffic studies?
Yes, sir. My understanding is that a traffic study has been provided. There's some members of the commission have expressed concern, or some members of the council have expressed concerns that the traffic study was done at a time with low traffic count on the roads due to the pandemic. But the engineers stated that they did take that into consideration and adjusted the traffic study accordingly. If there is no other discussion, I've called on everyone. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. I'll call for the vote. Maryam, will you take a roll call vote? All in favor of approval of item number six, which is the annexation and plan of service for Bledsoe Springs? Indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier?
Nay.
Mr. Wilson? Councilwoman Love?
No.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather?
Oh.
Ms. Hibbler?
No.
It fails five to one.
No, two I was voted yes.
I had two before.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tripp rated, you wrote yes or no?
Oh, no, I'm afraid I used the word nay. I should have said, I should have, I was naying like a horse. I should have said no.
I think it was Mr. Wilson. John, Johnny and Rick.
So Mr. Wilson, you voted aye?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. And Councilwoman Love, you voted no?
Correct.
Okay, so this, so let's see. So it's four to two. Thank you.
Motion failed. What's the point of order? If motions, if item number six failed, do we even know to hold a vote on item number seven? I'm asking that.
I think you still need to give a recommendation.
Yeah, you need to vote on it. Hopefully you won't vote for it.
Yeah, that would be.
Tell you what to vote, but it would not make sense for you to vote for approval of an item that you don't even recommend annexing into the city.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion on the floor for item number seven, which is the preliminary master development plan for Bledsoe Springs.
I'll make the motion, Mr.
Is that a motion to approve with staff conditions?
I made a motion, but you know, based on that condition that I vote otherwise.
Okay. Would you, Mr. Strather, I can't tell you what to say, but just so that we don't go through the whole process of doing an amended motion, would you mind? Would you consider making your motion to approve the, the issue of the right of way for the utilities? I just want to get this on the record.
I'll make the motion as you addressed in regards to that, yes.
Okay. And Mrs. Hibbler, did you second that motion?
I was going with a motion to deny it.
Okay, well, I'll have to wait. Mr. Strather has a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second to approve?
A second is motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve it in a second. Obviously, we have denied the annexation. As far as comments go, I will just lead off by saying that if they bring back another plan in the future, I will tell you that my concern over the density was that it was exceeding what's permitted by the county. If and when the council elects to annex properly, I sure would suggest that they bring back a plan that has no more density than they would have had with the county. Any other comments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Let me remind everybody that the motion is to approve. So if you vote aye, you're voting in favor of the preliminary master development plan after we've rejected the rezoning. That doesn't make sense. So if you're against it, vote no. Maryam, will you take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier?
No.
Mr. Wilson? Councilwoman Love?
No.
Dr. Organe?
No.
Mr. Strather?
Uh, no.
Ms. Hibbler?
No.
It fails five to one.
All right, thank you. Motion failed, or item failed. We'll move on to item number eight. Item number eight is resolution number two zero two one dash O two four, Harsh Properties rezoning with preliminary master development plan. And this item will come with a public comment. Which staff member is presenting the item tonight?
Jillian Ogden, Staff Planner.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jillian.
Next slide, please. The owner and applicant request to rezone 35.59 acres consisting of 26.16 acres from the R15 medium density residential district to R10 PRD medium density residential development district, and 9.43 acres from the R15 medium density residential district to the PNC Planned Neighborhood Commercial District, with a preliminary master development plan for the Harsh property located south of Hartsfield Pike and north of Cairo Road. Next slide, please. The master plan proposes 103 single-family homes on 6,000 square foot lots, which is a density of 3.94 units per acre. This lot size is similar to the Rose Cottage Development to the east, which is zoned R6. The existing residence constructed in 1919 has been owned by the Harsh family since completion. The owner does not intend to preserve the existing house and does not believe it has historic value. The planning commission should consider if the PNC zoning is appropriate in this location with the existing character area of suburban neighborhood established. This is a predominantly residential character area, and most of our commercial zoning such as PGC would likely be too intense and not appropriate here. PNC is more restrictive than PGC, but it still allows uses such as retail, food service, and office space. MRO is a comparable and acceptable zoning in this character area and is more restrictive. However, there is a residential, residential is allowed in MRO while PNC is limited and is limited to commercial. So that is just something to be discussed tonight for those PNC proposed lots along Hartsfield Pike. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. For the architecture, the single-family residences fronting on Cottage Drive, that is to the east, will be one or two and two stories with a front-loaded two-car garage. The front facades will consist of 15 to 20% brick and stone and 80 to 85% of hardy siding. The sides and rear will consist of 100% hardy or vinyl siding. The developer proposes that 25% of the homes constructed on Cottage Drive be ranch-style homes to create a transition between the existing duplexes and the proposed development. So this is that street right along the cottages, the duplexes across the street. Next slide, please. The remaining single-family residences will be two stories with front-loaded two-car garages. The front facade will consist of 100% hardy siding with the option for home buyers to select front elevations consisting of 15 to 20% brick and stone and 80 to 85% of hardy siding, consistent with the once proposed long Cottage Drive. The sides and rear facades will consist of 100% hardy or vinyl siding. Next slide, please. The conceptual commercial building elevation, so typical retail tenant buildings constructed of brick and stone ephors with parapet roofs of a variety of heights. The architecture will meet the 70% masonry requirement for the commercial. Next slide, please. The rezoning will require a public comment and vote by planning commission. This item will go on to city council with the planning commission's recommendation for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Do we have a representative for the applicant online? Oh, just one moment before I do that. We have James Benton with the Gallatin Economic Development Agency who would like to speak as a representative of the city as well. James, go ahead. Well.
Thank you. I, I just want to make sure everyone's aware that on the south, southeast side of that railroad, there's a 40-acre parcel that is zoned industrial and is not likely to be downzoned from that. It's, as you know, we are lacking industrial property here, and it's already been approved for a spur for CSX. I think this is great development, and I'm excited that they're including some commercial up there at the front. Love the way it is. I just want everyone to be aware of that and think that something should be inserted into whatever kind of covenants or whatever are created here, just to make sure everyone understands that that's behind them. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Do we have a representative for the applicant online?
Yes, this is Tyler Gray with CSTG.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tyler.
Yeah, we, Jillian pretty much covered it. As far as the staff conditions for approval, we would like to propose an alternate to item number four, tight 20 buffer yard along the rear of the lots adjacent to the PNC zoning. Rather than a typical buffer yard 20 feet wide and over space, we'd like to propose shallowing the middle setback along those lots for planting requirements within a 10-foot strip to provide that, that buffer that planning is requesting without really losing any more usable property. Beyond that, we agree with the rest of the conditions from the plan.
Which item was that? Number four?
Yes, number four, tight 20 buffer yard along the proposed R10 zone area adjacent to the PNC.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public comment. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak in regards to this item, item number eight, which is the Harsh property rezoning with preliminary master development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Kristi Allen, who has raised her hand indicating she'd like to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Kristi. If you would, state your name and again state your address for the record.
Okay, and this is Kristi Allen. I'm at 104 Vineyards Court. And with this, this development literally being a quarter of a mile in the opposite direction from the same intersection that we discussed earlier, many of the comments that I made on the last development, you know, would apply here. And I'm not sure you know, that all needs to be repeated, but certainly, you know, the traffic concerns, the number of accidents on that stretch of highway. And as I mentioned before, and many of my neighbors, there, there has been a petition signed with more than 500 signatures that we have presented to the city regarding some sort of, whether it's a traffic light or some sort of improvements to the intersection of Cairo Road and Airport Road. And obviously, this would have a very much more direct effect on that intersection. And, you know, we're already dealing with issues and then just to add more development to that is only going to complicate that. And, you know, that intersection is extremely dangerous as well. And there has been construction over the last two to three years, and Cairo Road was moved. The entire road was moved to make way for more runways at the airport. And in doing so, it was, it was moved to where visibility is extremely reduced from what it used to be. So there really needs to be a lot of attention paid to that intersection with more, you know, traffic dumping into that area. And, you know, in the mornings, of course, you know, seven to eight o'clock in the morning, it's busy. But then in the afternoon, it seems like the rush hour begins at three o'clock and it doesn't end until six. And it's just impossible to make a left-hand turn on Airport Road from either direction. So I just ask that you, you know, really give this a lot of attention. On the backside of this property, right there at the railroad crossing or the railroad tracks, this property floods. I mean, with just a, just a moderate rain. It doesn't even have to be a flooding, you know, type rain situation, but with just, you know, just a moderate rain. It tends to flood right there and, you know, just, just below the railroad tracks. So that, that would be another concern that we have. But just the same situation, you know, the, the fire department, you know, needs that if we add any more development out on that east side of town and, you know, just the concerns that even, you know, Mayor Brown mentioned before about no, you know, annexation, you know, being a struggle, you know, for us to, for the city, you know, to deal with what's already been annexed and coming down the pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Josh, do we have anyone else who is raising their hand to speak?
So again, this will be the last call for item, public comment on item number eight, harsh properties rezoning. If you'd like to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or hit star nine on your telephone. That will raise your hand to let us know that you'd like to speak on this item. Again, this is item number, item number eight, harsh property rezoning. Mr. Chairman, no one else has raised their hand indicating they'd like to speak on this item.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll close the public comment, and I will open it for discussion or entertain a motion on the floor.
I have a question. These are 6,000 square foot lots. There's 104 single-family buildings that will be there. What is the width in between these? And also, how many houses, homes per acre does that end up being?
I believe they have 3.94 units per acre. Tyler can correct me if I'm wrong. And then I, I believe the side yard they are requesting is five feet. So there'd be 10 feet between structures.
Okay, well, I oppose both of those. I believe that's, that's too many houses in that area. Although, you know, it's a beautiful piece of property. I just don't want it to be too crowded because of, I mean, we're, we're away from that Airport Road intersection, but the traffic apparently still is going to be bad. And I would, I just feel like that's kind of crowding that in there. Also, I'm really disappointed that they're going to demolish that, that home that kind of just looks like part of our history, but I understand that that's their prerogative. Is there a possibility that we could cut out a few of these homes and, and bring the number per acre or the side yard width to be more?
So Councilwoman Love has raised some good questions. Do you want, would you like for the applicant to respond to those questions, Councilwoman Love?
Well, yes. And as far as what Ms. Allen said about that flooding area, I think that I, I asked about that the last time this was brought up, two weeks ago, and there was, that, that was addressed.
This is.
We can hear the applicant's representative on those questions that she has raised.
Hi, John. This is Jim Harrison with CSTG, and Councilman Love is correct. We, we answered that question. We will be providing all the drainage needed on this project to, to make sure we're, we're compliant and not increasing drainage in any direction from the site. One thing we'll point out, we do have a good bit of open space, which is not just preserving trees, but it's preserving area so that we can honor existing drainage, which is where that existing pond is on the extreme eastern end, but also provide for water quality and water storage on the site. So there's a good bit of, I think it's 26% or something like that, open space on the site. The other thing I mentioned too is when we worked with engineering, we did talk a good bit about the, this, this project was split traffic in different directions. Having a primary access up on Hartsfield Pike, which of course is a five-lane section with a lot of capacity, then have a secondary connection on Cairo Road, allowing, and then third connection on Cottage Drive, allowing people to make choices thereby minimizing that. But we feel the plan, we actually have agreed as part of staff comments to take out a couple of lots. Take out a couple of lots where it was a bit snug to open space and we're in agreement with that as part of the conditions. We feel like this this really helps to complete the neighborhood with the quality of housing we're doing here. And as well, it also protects open space that we want to see protected as well, so. Just I hope that answers some of the questions we will be doing at the FMDP stage. We'll be doing a detailed traffic study to take a look at each. In each movement created or that would be changed in any way by this development to make sure we're not creating any sort of hazard. From a traffic standpoint, to make sure we're protecting public welfare in that in that extent. So. I think I answered most of the questions.
I I appreciate that and I will mention that all of the exits that you mentioned do end up on back on Hartsford Pike, so there may. It may turn on to Cairo Road, but Cairo Road connects with Hartsford Pike as well.
Yeah, Councilman Love, I I understand. When we talked to engineering. And in the pre-app, we. At least I felt like we had had an agreement and I do believe this is the case. That traffic will split on those different accesses. One of them, of course, is the Cottage Drive and we're building these single-family homes across the street from the existing duplexes on that side. But but giving people the choice to to minimize their 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 traffic trips and and go in the direction that. They think that they need to is actually something that that will be looked at as part of the traffic study. And I I don't want to speak for staff, but I I felt like as we talked through this in pre-app that. That having these redundant connections was going to accomplish that.
Okay, I appreciate that, but my other concern is there's almost four homes per acre, which just is an awful lot. So at that at that amount of homes per acre through there, I don't think that I would vote for this.
So I'll pick up with a. A question to staff. It's currently, this plan shows three point nine four units per acre. Under the current zoning on that part, let me just remind everyone that this property is already annexed into the city and this property will develop. The question is how will it develop and so under the current zoning of R fifteen medium density residential. How many units per acre are they permitted by straight zoning?
It's currently zoned R fifteen, so it would be two point nine roughly units per acre and in the R fifteen. Now their calculation is just based off the area that they are rezoning to residential, not including their out parcels. So take that into account. So so nine acres of it isn't in their density count. Their density counts only based off of what they're zoning to R ten.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have this right, that in the footprint of the residential properties, they are permitted two point nine units per acre, but they are requesting three point nine units per acre.
I mean, if you if you if the whole property is currently R fifteen and so if you took, let's see. If you took thirty-five point fifty-nine acres. At the current zoning, you'd be allowed a hundred and three units if you took the whole thing. But they're doing a hundred and three units in a condensed area because they have those out parcels. So if the whole area was R fifteen and they just developed it with the zoning it has now, that's a hundred and three units. With their proposal now, with them cutting out about nine acres for out parcels, with the remaining, that's a hundred and three units just in a more condensed area.
This this five feet per side yards is just amazes me as well. These homes look to be fairly good size. It just seems very crowded.
Where I was going with this, Mister Harrison, if you're still available there online. I can't do this math in my head, but I'm sure that y'all have already run scenarios on this property. If you didn't request five-foot side yard setbacks. If every property had a ten-foot side yard setback, that would add ten feet to the frontage of each property. Do you know how that change would affect your lot count if you kept the current open space footprint as it is?
Well, I haven't done that calculation, but but if it would probably, it would probably reduce us by ten to fifteen lots, something like that. What what one thing, it'd be about a twenty percent reduction. One thing I would mention and Gillian did a great job of explaining everything. We actually have removed as part of the agreement to the conditions and we're going from a hundred and three to a hundred and one. One of the things we're doing with this is is really looking at the key open space that we have around the project, which includes. Open spaces interior to the project and what we're really attempting to do with this plan is identify and preserve and protect. Open space along the railroad spur to the south. You know, and then also open space interior to the property and then of course, open space next to the out parcels. I mean, part of the. Part of the overall concept of this development is to really work at protecting those out parcels so that they can be. A generator of revenue for this, for not just the city, but provide for that commercial option out along Hartsfield Pike as well. But also to match up with the 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 properties to the east along Cottage Drive and on Long Roads Cottage Circle. Which are already duplexes and so what what we're trying to do is make a healthy transition, but then also create open space at this time. The the yield, the decrease in yield of twenty percent would be. Would just be really, really tough to make the economic because of the roads and the infrastructure and the number of things that we're doing with open space and setting aside. Open space at those key locations.
Thank you, Jim. And that's, I know I caught you off guard that asking you that question of how it would change your lot count. I just want to remind everyone that. They're permitted two point nine units by the current zoning. They're asking for three point nine units. Even if we don't feel like three point nine units appropriate. I don't think that we need to pull the property all the way down to two point nine units because we are getting a better deal. The city is getting a better deal out of this planned development with this open space. You know, people don't, they are building smaller yards, but they still want an open space of ground where they can throw the ball to their dog or they can throw. Play ball with their with their children. So it's kind of a communal open space. And also, if we went with straight zoning and they just designed, they just built this thing out by the R fifteen. There would be no bio-retention areas, I don't believe, other than maybe that existing pond back there. So we are getting something in return for this. We might have to negotiate a little bit on the the number of lots and if three point nine four isn't appropriate, then what is?
Mister Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may add a couple of observations here, a lot of the zonings in the city, including outside the city, were established well before adoption of our comprehensive plan. And they're holdovers for many, many places. So they were zoned R fifteen or some other lower density. In fairly close proximity to town. This is about a mile from downtown. And this is not unusual development pattern, side setbacks or the density, certainly for the. Properties that are adjacent to it to the east. Some other properties such as the Cairo Estates property on near the airport, near Cairo Road, has a similar design. This is really the how the market is is driving development nowadays as opposed to the old Euclidean zoning that was holdouts from years ago. And certainly well before the comp plan was adopted. Another thing I want to point out is the requested PNC zoning allows for fast food, drive-through, general retail sales and so forth. And that is not a intensity of commercial development that is supported by the comp plan. The comp plan does allow for some minor, such as MRO-type zoning for commercial zoning. So if the applicant would be willing to restrict. Commercial uses to those commercial uses that are identified in the MRO zoning, I think that you could make a finding that that would be consistent with the comp plan. But to allow more intensive commercial uses that are not allowed in the suburban residential and established character area is not appropriate.
Okay, so kind of two two separate issues we're talking about is the the permitted uses for the out parcels. And then the the density, which kind of ties back to the side yard setback. Other members of the commission, will you weigh in? At this point, we don't have a motion on the floor.
Mister Chairman, one other thing I want to mention is the their request for architecture. They do request. Not only cementous fibrous board materials, but also vinyl. So you might want to pay close attention to that. There is no brick and stone. It's that I recall seeing with these proposals, so that requires an exception.
Mister Chairman, this is the applicant. Can I add something here?
Please do, Mister Harrison.
We're willing to restrict those materials to something that, just like Mister McCord said, without without the vinyl. We don't need the vinyl on the commercial. Or retail. Residential, sorry. The other thing I wanted to mention is when y'all were talking about open space. There's an area that actually sits behind lots fifty-nine through sixty-eight. That's just an open, a passive open space area. One of the lots that we're going to be eliminating will be lot fifty-eight, which will allow us to have really good adequate room to get into that area for residents to use. And so. I just wanted to point that out as additional open space that I think is a benefit for the community. And then the only other thing is, I think Bill McCord mentioned. Are we willing or ask if we're willing to go to MRO and we are willing to do that too?
Can somebody tell me, did Mister McCord just say that the homes or only the. Commercial areas would not be brick or hardy board? And would be vinyl?
There was some confusion on that. I think the applicant response, the applicant's response had to do with the commercial side, the commercial out parcels, but Bill McCord was referring to the home.
Yeah, I I messed up, Mister Chairman. This is the Jim Harrison again. I'm sorry. I was talking about the homes and we will not have any vinyl on the homes. We were removing that. Sorry, I'm sorry. I created some confusion the way I responded to that.
No problem.
And Mister Chair, let me let me clarify, see that the applicant's willing to surrender certain commercial rights. To ensure that the development would be consistent with MRO. We're not necessarily asking for for you to establish MRO zoning. But just to limit those uses in the PNC zoning that to those uses that are allowed in MRO. So MRO allows multifamily uses and that's not our intent is to allow multifamily. Only the commercial uses that are allowed in MRO would we want to apply. So they're they're self-limiting themselves to MRO types of commercial uses in the, even though the property would be zoned PNC.
I would agree with that. Our client agrees with that.
And Bill, would those restrictions be accomplished as part of the master plan rather than trying to make them covenants or restrictions on the property?
Well, they could be covenants and restrictions, but they would be part of the master plan. So the master plan will identify all of those uses. Activities that are allowed in the PNC district and they will exclude things like restaurants with drive-up windows. Automobile-oriented type abuses that are permitted in the PNC district. Those would be excluded from this master plan.
What what type things would be included, Bill?
I can tell you, in MRO, the commercial uses are business communication service. Financial consulting and administrative, food service, general personal service, medical service. And then there are community facility activities like administrative, community assembly, community education, things of that nature. And then there are conditional conditional commercial activities, Bill, as well.
You said something about restaurants, but Bill had said just a second ago, no drive-up type restaurants.
There's food service and then there's the drive-through food service and MRO has food service as an allowed use.
So that would be a sit-down restaurant?
Yes.
But no.
That would not be driven.
No apartments. Even if this particular developer or owner sold and we had rezoned it, that's that would still be a condition of that MRO?
If you kept it, I think what they want to do is keep it PNC, which does not allow residential. And they would just do the commercial that is permitted in MRO.
Right.
Everything sounds good to me except that the high number of homes.
I will add that the comprehensive plan for this area, the density is recommended is two to five units per acre. That's just just for your consideration.
Wow.
So would anyone else, any other members of the commission like to weigh in?
What kind of impact would this have on Cairo Road?
Let the applicant address that question.
We we have agreed and actually gone out and looked at that based on engineering review and and talked with engineering about that specifically. Cairo. Has fairly good shoulder on the outside of it right now. We will be looking at that with the traffic study and specific those specific movements. So whatever whatever impact we have on Cairo Road. Whether it needs a shoulder or whether it needs any bit any bit of widening or anything like that, as recommended by the traffic study, we will provide. So we'll make sure we don't have an adverse impact on Cairo Road.
You know, Councilwoman Love, one of the things I noticed about this layout, different maybe than the one we looked at before, is that it does split the traffic. Going different routes out of here. I know that if I lived in this neighborhood and I were commuting to Nashville or somewhere else. I would probably come out of the neighborhood and turn left on Cairo Road so that I could hear Airport Road and exit town rather than driving through the middle of town. Matter of fact, if I want to go to the west side of town, that's probably what I'd do. So it's a real relief to me to hear that they're willing to make some improvements to Cairo Road as far as shoulders.
That's a good point.
I guess I'll just ask the applicant. If 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 they're comfortable responding to this, if there are concerns about the three point nine four units per acre and. But we also are not asking you to take it back down to three units per acre. Is there a. Is there an in-between that that still makes this economically viable for the for the applicant? There a reduced number of lots that still works for you?
Without reducing the open space.
Without impacting the open space. What we're getting here is a very well laid out plan with nice open space and bio-retention. And that's what we're getting in exchange for not going with straight zoning. Not exchange, but that's 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 what the city, the benefit the city is going by going with this master plan. Mister Harrison, if you followed that question.
I did. It's kind of a challenging question because when you take the open space and and put the open space in those designated areas. You're you're really, it's it's really a trade-off and we're really trying. And, and we're really trying to get open space in those areas where it protects the buffers and where it provides for continuous space. Uh, but then also provide for the ten feet between the houses that it's needed. And we understand that we also have a condition with that, that we don't have, we won't have mechanical equipment in those areas. And we will have a few of those and where uh, we have a little bit more space, uh, because if we have drainage or anything like that, it needs to be carried between the lots. We'll have to make sure that we provide the ten feet on each side in those locations. So you know, with removing the two lots from what we already had and improving the open space, uh, I think it's, it's just, uh, it's just too much of a, a reduction to go uh, to uh, to ten feet. And I, I, I really get nervous when I start doing something in between. I don't know that that really uh, helps si- any significantly because I think really what uh, folks are, are wanting in developments like this that we're seeing with the folks that are coming in and buying the housing, uh, is they prefer to have a maintained open space by the property owners association instead of additional yard to move. Uh, but I, I, that's probably the best response I can get. I think that's, that's what folks are wanting typically. And um, we feel like we have a, a good plan here to provide that high quality open space and then do the other things that we need to do to make sure we're meeting all the city requirements and making this a positive addition for the community as well as providing um, uh, very valuable retail space out along the front.
Thanks, Jim.
I have a question, if I could.
Yes, go ahead, Miss Tibler.
Uh, Mr. Harrison, on the, uh, I guess ninety-three through one oh three lots on the top right-hand side, those driveways go directly out to Cottage Drive. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. Yes.
And addressed directly across that, where the villas are, are they the same compatible lot size on both, like on the mirroring side?
Yeah, that, that will be the lots, the new lots that we've got, you'll actually end up with more space because uh, you have duplexes on the opposite side of the street. Uh, so you'll, it'll feel on our side, it would very much feel less crowded uh, on that side of Cottage, Cottage Drive than it will, than it does currently on the, the east side of the duplexes.
Okay. And what, what area has the, the smallest lot size? Which numbers, I guess, of the, the houses? Which ones had the lot, smallest lot sizes? Which, does that make sense?
Really, they're all, quite frankly, they're very similar in size. Uh, the uh, the only ones that are bigger is uh, there are some that like seventy-seven, seventy-six, seventy-five, seventy-four go around all the sack, they back up to the open space. But those, uh, and then there's a couple of them on the corner, uh, that are, that are slightly bigger, but, but for the most part, uh, the lots are very, very similar size. The, the one difference is, is that almost every one of these lots either have yard trees out in front of them, but the, a, a big, big, big number of them have a significant amount of open space in the rear. Uh, and that's, we believe that's a very important part of what we're trying to do with this plan is to make sure that the homes are, are, don't feel crowded, that they have a lot of open space in the rear along the common open space that's in the center of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have questions from any other, um, members of the commission?
Yes, I got one. There was an issue that he wrote up as, uh, the buffer. He was wanting to change a buffer from twenty to ten, and I, I don't remember where that was.
That's all along the, it's along the rear of the commercial. Uh, it has a lot, a lot to do with uh, that, how that goes in as part of the residential. And then when the commercial comes back in, uh, we want to make sure that, and we talk this through the detail with staff. I try, try to make sure that when that commercial is coming in, uh, that they're not going to uh, provide an adverse noise impact on the residents that are there.
Jim, could you repeat what you guys want to change, um, condition number four to for that buffer? Uh, cause right now, uh, for everybody, it's showing a type thirty along the PNC side. Um, and so can you clarify what you want to do for the residential side instead of the type twenty?
Uh, yeah, Julian, this is Tyler again. Uh, what we were proposing would be to uh, essentially for all the lots that back up to the PNC zone, we would uh, make those as a, an alternate lot typical where we pull the fifteen-yard rear setback into twenty-five feet instead of fifteen feet. And then we'll slide the PUDE behind that end and make a ten-foot wide buffer easement in the back of the lots. And then plant the required plantings for the type twenty buffer, we just plant them in a ten-foot strip instead of a twenty-foot strip. We're just trying to keep it clear, a lot of it's, we're trying to keep clear of the PUDEs as well as we do this.
So you want to do a ti- essentially a type twenty in a ten-foot area?
Correct.
And everybody, there is also still a type thirty in, on the commercial side. So it's, it'll be a total of forty feet of buffer, just for your information.
Oh, well, that's, that's different. I, I will tell you that a type twenty and a type ten is, is inadequate. That's cramming everything too close together, but if there'll be additional thirty feet of buffer, and I'm assuming that'll be a type forty buffer yard in that thirty-foot strip on commercial?
Um, it's, it's just a type thirty, um, which is, and that's what's between PNC and the, the residential. That's what's required. So.
Okay.
So it'll be, the whole thing will be forty feet of landscaping.
Okay.
So if you're okay with that, you'll need to change condition number four.
So, um, we've heard from Mr. Tibler, Mr. Wilson, Dr. Regan, do you have any, any comments?
Um, I don't.
Mr. Straub?
I'm fine.
Okay, well, then.
I have one more question. Is a, is there, is out parcels, is it kind of, say if they were built, it would be a walkability type? Minus the outside sidewalk? Like I see the green, uh, open space D, but that's not for that.
Yeah, we will, we will have a path that, that will give walkability back to that. And then also there will be sidewalks. There'll be sides between fifteen and sixteen. I don't know if you can see it on the plan there. It's just kind of a dark, a little bit darker green path between those two. Uh, and then there's uh, there also will be, of course, walkability goes into the commercial and, and as part of the as part of the standards with that to make sure we make that connection.
Okay, so two main places from the residential, but everything else sidewalk. I had a later date.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, question for staff real quick. Uh, I'm reading through the conditions of approval. Um, you, staff, you have not specified a condition that limits the commercial uses. Is that something we would need to add to this specifically?
If you would like to add that, yes, please.
Can you tell me which, uh, I don't know how to word that motion. Which, um, which commer- commer- which uses do you wish to specifically restrict?
Um, you could say that you would like to restrict the PNC out parcels to only commercial uses um, permitted in the MRO zoning district.
Permitted uses in the MRO zoning district. Um, but I'm not, I, I don't understand if you, uh, oh, okay, by restricting the PNC out parcels to only the permitted uses in the MRO, that does not provide them with the permitted uses that would be in MRO if they're not in PNC. Is that correct?
Yes, it'd just be the ones, and I think, I don't, I think they're the same between the permitted commercial uses.
Well, just be the commercial use.
Yeah, not the residential, just the commercial.
Okay. Well, uh, I will entertain a motion. Does anyone, uh, will anyone make a motion on the floor, one way or the other, for this property?
I move we approve it with the exceptions that have been noted.
Okay, I'm going to re- I'm going to state your motion and tell me if this is, um, how you, um, wanted it. Tell me if this is how you wanted it, uh, worded, Dr. Regan. Dr. Regan has made a motion to approve with staff's eight, nine, nine conditions, um, but adding a tenth condition to, uh, to remove, or, or to, uh, with, for the PNC out parcels to only have the permitted uses the commercial permitted uses in the MRO district. That's not worded correctly, is it, Julian?
You could, you could limit the commercial uses in the PNC out parcels to those permitted in MRO.
And what she said, yeah.
That sounds perfect.
Okay, Dr. Regan, you want your motion to include amending item four to, from a twenty-foot to a ten-foot buffer yard, or are you comfortable with it as it is?
I'm okay with it unless y'all want to do something different.
Well, the applicants want to do something different. Uh, staff's report is to leave it as a twenty-foot buffer. Uh, do you want to leave it as a twenty or reduce it to a ten? Or twenty in a ten?
I, I'm in agreement with the staff.
Okay, then Dr. Regan's motion is, um, with all of nine, the nine staff conditions plus the tenth one uh, regarding the permitted uses in the PNC commercial portion. But it did not change the buffer. Do I hear a second? Will anyone second that motion? Then I will second that motion. Uh, uh, we'll have a discussion on the motion. Any further, I know we've had a lot of discussions, but we have a motion on the floor now.
So then.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hibler.
So the only reduction in, um, structures would be the two from the open, the, around the green space area. Is that correct?
No, there's been no, uh, the motion that's on the floor does not, um, change the, uh, buffer from a twenty-foot to a twenty and a ten as the applicant requested. It's still, it's, it's, um, it's still a twenty-foot buffer.
No, I was talking about the building. There was two housing numbers that were, said they were going to be removed.
Oh, yeah.
That, I believe, is condition number eight already.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're talking a hundred and two single-family lots now or a hundred and four?
It'll be a hundred and one.
A hundred and one, and which, I know that fifty-eight was one to be removed.
And thirty-three.
Fifty-three?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. And fifty-eight. So should there be, I, I have in my notes a hundred and four. So that just brings it down to a hundred and two and you, didn't you say a hundred and one?
Uh, I think the, the version that went to work session was a hundred and four and it went down to a hundred and three with this resubmital. Am I, is that correct, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, that's right. That's right.
So it's a hundred and one with those two lots removed.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, other than my concern over the, uh, the density and the high number, which I, I'm going to say at this point, the rest of the plan looks good and I, I probably will vote yes on it. I'm still considering.
Uh, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that's on the floor, and that is to add a condition to remove the use of vinyl. Uh, which that's what's already agreed to. Um, I just want to get that in the notes. So, um, I've placed an amendment to the motion to add, to remove the use of vinyl. Do I hear a second to that?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, um, Marion, can you take a quick vote on my amendment to the motion? Broke our vote.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Dr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler?
Aye.
Ms. Hibler?
Yes.
I say six zero.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm back to the original.
Wait a minute, can I add a, another amendment to it?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Uh, okay, my amendment is that, uh, they, they add some brick and stone to some of the houses. They don't want to beat all of them.
I'll second that. But I guess we should, uh, give a number or percentage.
Well, okay, I'll put a percentage. How about thirty-five?
Do you want it on thirty-five percent of the homes or thirty-five percent of the front facade?
Thirty-five percent of the homes have some brick on it.
For the entire development?
Entire development, yes.
How much brick?
Somebody has to come up with a figure.
What do we usually, isn't there, there's usually a guideline, isn't there, like twenty percent or twenty-five?
Julian, is there a way to put up the pictures on the?
Yes, go back. Dustin, back. And one more. Yeah, here you go.
All right, I'll come up with a figure there. Thirty-five percent brick.
So you, yes.
Sorry.
So you want thirty-five percent of the homes to have thirty-five percent brick on the front of them?
Uh, not necessarily. Thirty-five percent of the homes have thirty-five percent brick and stone.
Okay.
I think that would be, this is Jim Harrison. I think that, that would be fairly, I want you to put those renderings up there because that's, that'll be fairly consistent with what you're saying there. We'll probably have to increase some, but, and I think we, we can make that happen.
Um, do I hear a second to Mr. Wilson's, um, motion?
Linda did.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I, I did a minute ago before we added in the, the percentages.
Okay.
I would, well, I would rather it be at like fifty percent of the homes versus thirty-five percent since this is real, that's really not that much difference to what we see.
We, we can do fifty percent of the homes.
I, I might get motion, make it fifty percent of the homes. Okay.
And if I understood, let me re- uh, oh, I'm sorry. Do you wish to second that, Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not clear of the motion. I believe the motion is that fifty percent of the homes will have at least thirty-five percent brick.
Right.
Okay.
And are stone.
Oh, yeah, masonry.
Yes.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor with three amendments now. And I haven't been writing them down, so we're in trouble.
I have them, Chairman, if you need them.
I'll take you up on that, yeah. Have any other, uh, discussion and/or amendments? Saying none, then we'll go back to the original motion on the floor, which was to approve with all of staff's conditions plus the tenth condition, uh, restricting the commercial uses of the PNC.
Did we vote on my amendment?
Brick, I'm sorry. Vote on the brick or stone amendment?
Oh, I don't think we did. I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, okay, we'll need to hold a, a vote, please, Marion, on, uh, of Mr. Wilson's amendment number three to the original motion.
Okay, Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Aye, um, Ms., Mr. Wilson? Councilwoman. Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler? Mr. Stroudler? Ms. Hibler?
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler?
Aye.
Okay, it passes six-zero.
Okay, so now we'll return to the original motion, which I just stated as the, all of staff's conditions, plus the tenth one about restricting the permitted commercial uses on the PNC out parcels.
Okay, Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler?
Aye.
Ms. Hibler?
Yes.
Passes six-zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to item number nine, which is, item number two-zero-two-one dash oh-two-two, Winston Place amended preliminary master development. Which staff members admitted this item?
Dustin Shane, staff planner. All right, so this is an amendment to a existing preliminary master development plan. It's called Winston Place. All right, it is located on Highway one-oh-nine, south of Red River Road. It is currently zoned MRO, and they wanna retain that zoning. It's some stats, it's a nineteen-point-eighty-four acre parcel, it's sixty-eight single-family lots, three open space tracks, four rights of way. In the report, I, there was a typo saying the density was twenty-nine units per acre, that's incorrect. It's three-point-forty-three units per acre. And you'll note that the character area that this falls under prescribes two to five units per acre. So it's sitting right there in the middle of what is prescribed by the comp plan. The amendments, there was some significant feedback during the work session, and there were amendments made. The lot sizes were increased from four thousand to six thousand square feet, which is what the MRO district requires. The only exceptions they're asking for now are for lot width to go from sixty to fifty feet, side yards to go down from ten to five. And for a buffer yard behind lots one, cross that, that buffer yard. And for the five-foot side yard setbacks, that's pretty standard as far as what we've approved, what you all have approved in the past, for an exception, and it does meet the, the building code, building separation of ten feet. As far as density goes, I'm numbering here as kinda the step down in density, it is a transition. There are bigger lots to the northeast, but they decrease in size as you come down Summerland, and then so this would be a further kinda tier down in density, but, but would be meeting the zoning. Also, a, a good feature that they're incorporating is some connectivity to the existing neighborhoods to provide more circulation. This is a, looking at how much open space and landscaping they're proposing. And you can kinda see that one of, one of the reasons the density is higher in the lot size is smaller is because they're providing that open space, especially back here along the creek. And that's gonna feed into kind of an, solidize together and creates a pleasing environment for the residents. Now, their water quality is also located back here to be close to where it outfalls into the creek. The elevations were also revised in accordance with staff comments, and has created what we think is a more aesthetically pleasing product here. So we recommend that, that alternative architecture plan that they're proposing. And we also recommend this as a major amendment, just because it was originally the Long Hollow Baptist property that was an existing master.
Do we have a representative for the applicant online to speak?
This is Jim Harrison, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Sorry about that, I had to switch rooms a little bit, thank you for, for going through that. We are in full agreement with city staff with the conditions that they presented. One thing I, one thing I did wanna talk about here, Dustin mentioned that, is that we, we worked on this about three or four years ago with Long Hollow Baptist Church, and they are very happy about their campus on the other side of town. It's just, as things have transpired, they've decided not to turn this into a Galatin satellite, but maintaining their other satellite on the other side of town. Very excited about things that are going on in Galatin, and I just wanted to say that before we got started. One of the things is we were working alongside their representatives, was we wanted to make sure something came in here that was very nice, that had nice quality, good quality, open space, that really accented what was along the creek, that, that had the Bucking Trail as a long, as part of the creek, but also brought that up internal into the site. One of the things that we've adjusted since work session, as we were listening to planning commissioners, we, we wanna work alongside the city with regards to what is appropriate for the land use. We fall within the land use from an overall density standpoint, but again, we want to make sure we're preserving the existing trees that are on the north, or the top part of the page that you're looking at right now. Those existing trees are very mature, we wanna make sure we maintain those, but then also supplement those. We also, one of the things we agreed to when we were working on the church was Long Wedge Wood, which is on the northwest side, was to put in landscape there along the front edge of that street, as it lines up across the Wedge Wood on the other side of one-oh-nine. Also, we want to maintain and enhance a buffer as shown on the plan along one-oh-nine. There's already trees out there right now, but we'll be coming in with understory and trees that are appropriate for that. I was out, actually out on the site looking at that, a day or two before it started filming. So we got a good look at, at how all that should, should, should happen. There are a couple of other buffers on the eastern side that, that we think make a, a, a good transition into the existing homes on Summerland Drive. We will be very respectful of that, that neighborhood. And, and so that, with that said, I just really wanted to walk through this and, and point out how we have very carefully placed open space around these lots. Could have made the lots bigger on the back and a number of different places, but, but, but we felt it was more important to make sure we got that real high-quality reserved open space in the backyard. Sometimes we like to call it this, and I think in this case, for a number of these lots, it is a deep case that really you got a backyard that places out onto a park type, a park like said. So with that, we just wanna make ourselves available for any questions. We appreciate your consideration on the side.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. With that, I will open it to a public comment. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak in regards to item number nine, which is the Winston Place amended preliminary master development plan, please do so now. Josh, do we have anybody raising their hand?
We do, we have Kelly Lane. Kelly, your line has been unmuted.
Good evening, I'm in the current neighborhood of Fairview, that backs up to this, previous, which is great benefit. I'm still concerned about the variance for the distance between the homes because of my other two concerns of flooding and traffic. The right area of this map, those homes on Summerland that back up, there's flooding right now at the back of those homes on Summerland, and throughout that section of Blade Street. The more homes that get put here, the less green area there is to absorb that, the more runoff. And I'm concerned that this is, that's coming across from the Twin Eagles neighborhood. When those people are leaving their homes, they're turning right, for the most part, to go over to Long Hollow to head up into Nashville. The bottom of this map is where the on-ramp from Long Hollow ends. So this is coming in very close to that. And traffic above the top of this map where twenty-five Red River is, backs up all the way to this distance frequently. And these people are gonna be turning left across two lanes of one-oh-nine to head into Nashville consistently. We also have traffic that backs all the way up to this entrance, and they could cut through here over to Summerland to get over to Red River instead of waiting at the light. That through traffic possibility, and the fact that those people are gonna be heading left across one-oh-nine, gives me concerns about the traffic, because there's already a lot of accidents on one-oh-nine. There's hardly a day that goes by that I don't see blue lights out there. Every day, every other day up there near that one-oh-nine-twenty-five intersection right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Lane. Josh, do we have anyone else who would like to, well, I'm sorry, Ms. Lane, I didn't mean, I wasn't trying to cut you off. Were you finished?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Josh, do we have anyone else who would like to speak?
We have Kyle Ring. Kyle, your line has been unmuted.
Hi, Kyle Ring, one-fifty-three Summerland, so, anything from forty-four through fifty-three, I'd be concerned about anything at all that would flood, unless it's raised to prevent water from spilling up to them. Also, in terms of the traffic, I mean, if you guys want the last thirty days of our ring to see how many times I get people to come down here and turn around in this gravel turnaround, it's all, all day long. In fact, today was fifteen times, so the amount of through traffic is just gonna increase, which is a worry for us who have children in this area. So if, if the motion passes for this to become a reality, then there's gotta be something put in there to slow people down, such as speed bumps. Obviously, there'll be stop signs and such, so that is a concern. Also, just on to the actual homes themselves, I was reading through, I believe it was image nine-dash-two, where it says there's gonna be one parking spot and then one garage spot. But in the images on nine-dash-seven, it shows them being, garages more like ours, that are, you can fit two cars in them, it's tight, but you can. Just for some clarification on that. And then to echo Kelly, traffic again on, on one-oh-nine, having to do that in the morning just to get my son to school is a challenge as it is. But then when you couple the fact of the Bowls Farm being at the front of, gonna create big time issues. And then I'll wrap it up with, I do have concerns, significance and certain concerns, in fact, about the utilities. I actually have a work order in with the city right now to come unclog our drainage pipe next between me and, and the Swigers next to us, because it's getting compacted. So, you know, if they're gonna be flooding into our existing drainage, that also is gonna be, need to be looked at to see if there's changes that need to be had. But also the electricity, so we fried three different motherboards on our washers and dryers when we first moved in here, less than two years ago, because of power outages through Galatin. So with adding two thousand homes across the street, another sixty-eight in front of us, and then all the other development that's behind us off of, can't remember the name of the street, Fair, Fair, no, it's not Fairview, anyways, we're talking about a lot of extra workload on our utilities that we currently have. So what it does, Galatin have, what do they have planned to try to assist with that extra workload that's now gonna be coming through them? And last, sorry, I forgot about it, was mailboxes. Why do they have just a single location versus matching what is already existing, not just in our neighborhood, but everyone around us of a location at each lot, a mailbox at each spot? Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Ring. I believe I can answer the question is that the mailbox kiosk is the, staff help me out, isn't that preferred or, or requested by the postal service?
The post office changed their standards about, between three and five years ago to where they will no longer do individual mailboxes for new development, that it has to be gang mailboxes. So i, in order to accommodate that, we've been telling applicants to show where it's going to be on the plans so that we can ensure that there's parking spaces nearby, and then it's in a convenient location to the development that would not impede traffic elsewhere.
Okay, and then Mr. Ring also raised a question about lots forty-four through fifty-three. On page C-one-oh-two of the drawings, it has lot, those lots forty-four through fifty-three asterisk, as, and denoted as critical lot notes, and I've read the description. But can the applicant kinda shed some light on what they mean by critical lot note, and what has to be done with those lots to safeguard against flooding?
This is Jim Harrison again, yeah, those are lots that are adjacent to the floodplain. And part of what we will do is floodplain analysis. But we'll, we will have to actually present it to the city and get the city's blessing on it, and we will actually have to submit it to FEMA and get their blessing on it as well. One of the things, as I was listening to the comments, one of the things I think would be a good idea is we could run that floodplain study on up to Highway twenty-five. It's beyond what we would normally look at, but if we could get Mr. Ring's address at that point, try to take a look at what's happening there, and also look at that local, it sounds like he has a local issue maybe with that storm pipe. We could look at that as, as well. We would do that all as part of the engineering. And then also, of course, on site, we'll have drainage detention and water quality, where we'll have to make sure we, we don't provide any increase from, from our side. But we wanna make sure that this is better after we've completed what, what we add as part of this development.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And just to be clear, I wasn't moving into my, my own questions or, or questions from the commissioners. I was trying to address the concerns raised on the public comment. Josh, if I understand correctly, we don't have anyone else who wishes to speak?
So at this time, if you'd like to speak on item number nine, Winston Place amended preliminary master development plan, please use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen, or hit star nine on your telephone to indicate you would like to speak on this item. Item number nine, Winston Place amended preliminary master development plan. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one has raised their hand, indicating that they would like to speak on this item.
Very well. At this time, I will close the public comment on item number nine. The first order of business for us will be to vote if this is a major or a minor amendment. The first order of business for us will be to vote if this is a major or a minor amendment because it was part of a previous PMDP that was approved. So to remind everybody, a minor amendment is dealt with at the planning commission level, a major amendment, it's sent back to council. And the litmus test for something to be a major amendment is a change in use or a change in circulation, a change in density. I believe it, in my opinion, it satisfies all of those requirements, so I will make a motion that it be a major amendment. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on major versus minor? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote, all those in favor of this being a major amendment and therefore sent to council, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Now I'll open the floor to entertain a motion on the item and/or discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Councilwoman Love.
Could somebody address that concern about the traffic turning onto 109? It sounds almost like a problem that could be coming up like we have been discussing on Hartsfield Pike already with neighborhoods being unable to turn.
Do we have a representative from our engineering department on the call tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to field that question?
Sure. So right now, because this is a PMDP, we don't have a traffic impact study on this particular development. If someone was coming off of Wedgewood Drive and did need to head to Nashville, they would most likely have to turn left and cross two lanes of traffic on the Highway 109 and stay in the middle area there to make that maneuver. But keep in mind, there is a plan to extend Wedgewood Drive on up to Highway 25, Red River Road at some point. Potentially, somebody could utilize a signal, signalize intersection at 25 and 109 there. That's about all I have on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I live on Highway 25, and I understand the gentleman's concern, but that is very much controlled by the light, and I'm not in favor of cutting off... We need more access points, not fewer. I used to live on Lakeshore Drive, which is right on Nashville Pike. We did not have accidents there, but people had to be patient depending on the traffic load. And Highway 25 does not have that high volume, and I don't think 109 does too either, but it has, it depends on certainly the time of day and schools getting out, and I do understand We should not limit access or egress.
I'm not sure if I understand it. Is there a light at Wedgewood Drive onto Highway 109?
No.
This is Jim, this is Jim Harrison. I have a couple of things.
Jim, I'm going to have to ask you to speak up or get a little bit closer to the phone.
Sorry. I'll try to speak up, I'm not sure what the... Anyway, we do have, there are two decal lanes proposed on Highway 109. One of the other things, and I want to echo what Brian Rich Snyder was saying, we've talked informally a little bit about Wedgewood Drive and understanding that it's going to extend up to the north, and where it comes out is where there would be a traffic signal on the south end of the Bow Farm. And we've actually talked about, and I think this is important to include at some point, is some sort of traffic calming measure along that section of drive further to the north. I know we're not talking about that plan right now as we speak, but our goal with this is to provide redundant connections, allow people to make choices. That minimizes the amount of traffic. We are, we will confirm and follow up as part of that PMDP with traffic study, specifically verifying the links and the lanes that we've got proposed on 109. And I would agree with, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Dr. Organe just said. The traffic signal does create gaps that are sufficient. We actually have had a traffic engineer look at that back when we were proposing to do the church campus here. So, I mean, those are very valid things that we're going to watch, we're going to look at, we're going to be careful about, but it is very important that we provide redundant connections and we not try to reduce those number of connections because it will concentrate traffic. But we do need to look at traffic calming where it's important and look at those key intersections and make sure they're properly designed, and we are making that commitment to do that.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Jim, I'll just, I'll just tell you, I'm having a little bit of difficulty hearing you, so if I'm asking a question that you just answered, I apologize. But since you're working on the Bowls project, the Bowls Farm project as well, I'll ask, I think you can answer this question. Will Wedgewood Drive align with the southern access point from the Bowls property onto Red River Road?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have that information yet. Most likely, Wedgewood Drive will be a local street that will intersect with future streets that will be developed on the south side of Red River Road east of Highway 109, and those will not be a collector roadway, but they will be interconnected, and there will most likely be a local street that will extend south, or maybe two local streets that will extend south from Red River Road into this area.
How do we not know that yet? The Bowls property came before us last month.
Bowls property will have a collector roadway that will extend northward from Red River Road into the property. It will not align with the Wedgewood Drive, though. That, that, this Wedgewood Drive is located east of that intersection.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Well, can I just say something real quick? The, the, the plan was to have Wedgewood Drive be part of that, and that's why the Bowls project was given a dimension off of the intersection of Red River Road and 109 so that it would have an alignment into that.
Well, they don't have to be, their, their other lots will have to be replanted to result on that.
Correct, and, and I think there's some anticipation in the future to develop that, those properties to the north of this project to make that happen.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Harrison. Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
Sorry. We have looked at the alignment, and what Brian Rich Snyder says is very correct. I mean, there, the southern connection of the commercial mixed-use collector that's in the Bow Farm, where it comes out on Red River Road, will line up with where Wedgewood Drive extends up to the north. That's, that's why in between the section that we're building now and where it goes up to Red River Road, I think it will be important to look at some traffic calming, like a roundabout or something like that, to make sure we have proper traffic calming. But it is well planned, and it does line up the way it should. We, we have looked at that, and we can provide that exhibit to the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrison. And the reason I've raised that question is because if Wedgewood is aligned with the entrance into the Bowls property, then I'm not concerned about the traffic impacts. I think it's going to be fine. If it's not aligned, this is a concern about the left turn movement on the Highway 109. But my, my concerns are satisfied. We still don't have a motion on the floor yet, I don't believe.
No, we do not.
Well, then, to keep this proper, I will make a motion on the floor to approve item number nine with staff's comment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mrs. Hibbler. Discussion on that motion. All right, I'll ask one, I only have one question of the developer, and I apologize if I'm, I'm sure this is something you've looked into, but I need it recorded in the minute. Lots number 15, 25, 33, and 43 have very, very small building envelopes. Will you please commit in the minutes here of this meeting that your proposed building units will fit into those building envelopes because we don't want a request coming back later to make an amendment to the final master development plan or variance request on those lots?
Yes, sir, we do commit to that, and I, just to clarify an earlier question, too, we do have two car garages, that was, there's some typo there, just wanted to make sure that's clear as well.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted that in the minute. Other questions or discussion? Being none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote, all in favor of approval with staff's conditions, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to our final item, which is item number 10, which is resolution number 2021-01A, dissolve the regional planning commission, City of Gallatin Planning Department. So this is like an auto self-destruct motion. No, I'm just kidding, it's not. Who's presenting this?
I'll provide this information. Commissioners, we're requesting that you approve this resolution, which would essentially change the composition of the planning commission and do away with the regional authority now vested with planning commission, which is only for subdivision regulations. The county adopted a zoning resolution last summer, which took away extraterritorial zoning, so your planning region only has very limited effect. Certainly, you would retain the ability to plan for that area, meaning part of your comp plan, but you don't have zoning authority, enforcement of zoning, and you do have subdivision regulation enforcement, but that's created some issues because the county has the zoning, and we would be forced to then implement a subdivision design consistent with county zoning. So what we're proposing is to relinquish the regional authority for zoning, is not just zoning, but for development review completely. So this resolution is a recommendation to the council to do that. Council will be considering a similar resolution to send to the state, as well as an ordinance to change the regional municipal planning commission to a municipal planning commission. As a result, if, once all that goes through, we will have to remove the planning commissioner who lives outside the city, and that will be replaced with a person who lives in the city who's already been appointed, and once that occurs, that person can then be seated. So we're asking for approval of the resolution.
Yes, do we have any, let me check something, hold on. Thank you. Do we have any questions or will entertain a motion on the floor? No, I'm sorry, it does come with a public comment. That's what's confusing me as to why this has to have a public comment, but it does. Josh, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
If you would like to speak on this item, item number 10, dissolute, dissolution, dissolving the regional planning commission, please indicate so by raising your hand using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or hit star nine on your telephone, and that will raise your hand virtually for us. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one has raised their hand indicating they'd like to speak on this item.
Very well. At this point, I'll close the public comment, and we'll entertain discussion or a motion, or I'll just put a motion on the floor for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hibbler. Any discussion on this?
Can you explain again what the difference is using terms I can understand?
Currently, Gallatin is a regional municipal planning commission, which was created by the state planning office many, many years ago. This action removes that and requests, will, through the city council, requests removing the regional aspects from the title of the planning commission and creating only a municipal planning commission so that planning decisions related to zoning and subdivision regulations would only occur inside the city limits, not outside the city limits.
Councilwoman Love, we've lost all jurisdiction outside the city limit line. So this is pretty much procedural. My only question is, should the resolution be to dissolve the regional planning commission and at the same time form a municipal planning commission, or is that an act by a council that has nothing to do with us?
Yeah, council has that authority to do so. We don't need a state authority to create a planning, municipal planning commission.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, yes, go ahead.
With one comment, I've been trying to retire from this for several years, but the, the risk we run, and it may not be any control that we have, is, I'm a pretty firm believer that the county is way behind the adjacent cities in their not only planning, but their zoning and all the aspects to go with that, and if you lose your regional planning, it means the county can come right up to your property line and do whatever it is they do, and you have zero control. Am I correct with that, Bill?
Well, they have that authority now, so they can make whatever zoning changes they feel is appropriate up to the city's boundary now, and we don't really have much say-so other than just to weigh in on the effectiveness of that.
So even within the regional component of it, we don't have any control over that right now?
No, no, sir, not anymore.
Oh, okay.
We won't be annexing any more property through this commission?
That doesn't affect the annexation law. The city still has the ability to annex within confines of state law.
The planning region was created in the 70s, and it had a, had a sort of a buffer around the city. Our urban growth boundary is what determines annexations, and that's a much larger buffer around the city.
That makes sense.
Dr. Organe, just to put your mind at ease, the, what you said about the county planning in the past was definitely true, but we have a very competent county planner now, and they've been adding to their department. Their, their regulations are similar to our own now.
Well, I understand, but they are way behind the curve just because they didn't do anything. Not anybody's fault here, but, you know, they were woefully behind, and they still have a lot of catching up to do.
Yeah. Yeah. My understanding is that they've always had the authority to do this, to take this action, they've just decided to take control of that jurisdiction and, you know, exercise control over it. So not much we have in the matter. I believe we have a motion on the floor, and I can't remember if it's been seconded. I think it was seconded by Mrs. Hibbler.
Yes, sir.
Was seconded.
Any other discussion? Being none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of approval of item number 10, which is the to dissolve the regional planning commission aspect of the, to dissolve the regional planning commission, indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Um, with that, we'll move. Are there any items under other business or, uh, announcements by the staff?
Commissioners, we have a Tennessee American Asso- uh, Planning Association conference that will be on Thursday and Friday. This is an opportunity for the planning commissioners to receive credits. Uh, you're required to have four hours of tr- training credits each year. So this is an opportunity, if you want to sign up for one or both days, we can make that arrangement through our office. You can contact Suzanne in our office at six one five four five one five seven nine six, and she will get you registered. Again, that is Thursday and Friday of this week.
Is that virtual, Bill?
Yes, it is virtual.
Thanks for the warning.
We mentioned it at previous meetings that it's coming up.
But can you do one day? I, I can't, I can't even make it on Thursday, but I might be able to do it on Friday.
Yes, we can, we can make arrangements for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any other announcements?
Well, I got a comment. I, I know there was a lot of talk about traffic, uh, tonight. Uh, of course, I can't speak to Hartsfield Pike because I don't get on Hartsfield Pike often, but I do get on Scottsfield Pike. I take my granddaughter to Westmoreland to the school and a lot of times I pick her up. But, uh, when I get, try to get on Scottsfield Pike, I can't hardly get on Scottsfield Pike. That's in the morning, then the afternoon, both. And I know, uh, we've got some roads that need to be four lane and Scottsfield Pike is one of them. Uh, now they back up all the way to Westmoreland from Gallatin to, to Gallatin. And they travel at 60 miles an hour. And sometimes there'll be somebody doing 40. And all these people, they try to pass. Now, one day last week, I saw uh, this happen, uh, two times, somebody pulled out and tried to pass four cars with oncoming traffic. And it scared the hell out of me because I thought, sure, there was going to be some dead people. But they, they had to pull off over the shoulder of the road in order to keep from getting hit. And, uh, I know we get to council late here and, uh, there's something needs to be done about Scottsfield Pike and sound like maybe Hartsfield Pike. Maybe four lane in that road. I know it takes a long time to do it, but it's way overdue. Thank you.
Those are both state roads though, aren't they?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Tonight's, tonight's theme, uh, Brian, with engineering department, tonight's theme on these last couple of projects have all been about traffic and a lot of the traffic that we're seeing are on state routes. And I think we can make the argument that a lot of the traffic that, that we're seeing on these state routes is probably pass through traffic. People coming down from Portland, New Deal, going through Gallatin to get to 386. People coming from Hartsfield, Trousedale County, Westmoreland, coming down our state routes, going to 386. So, um, we can do all that we can, but at the end of the day, I think it's, we, we got to work with TDOT to, to make some improvements on our, our arterial systems running through our town.
Thank you, Brian. Um, well, if there's no other announcements, um, uh, I will make a motion to adjourn and I'm sure somebody will second.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn approves. Thank you. Uh, y'all have a good evening. Appreciate your time.
Good night.